The time is 6:00 PM. I would like to call to order the Norwood City School District Board of Education regular meeting. Today is Thursday, January the 16th. The Norwood City School District Board of Education follows a bimonthly meeting schedule. The first meeting of the month is called our committee meeting. At this meeting, we discuss fully our agenda for the board meeting to be held the third Thursday of each month. As board members, we encourage you to attend, watch and listen to our committee discussion resulting in action at the board meetings. For full disclosure, our committee meetings and board meetings are always announced, video and audio taped, as well as posted to our webpage for your view. All of our meetings are public and visitors are welcome. Mrs. Camp House, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ballard.
Present.
Mrs. Rarica.
Present.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Mr. Atwood.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Present. All right, if you would stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.04 on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. All right, item 1.05, these are our minutes from the regular board meeting held December 19th. 1.06, the minutes from our records commission meeting held January 7th. 1.07, the minutes from the tax budget hearing also on January 7th. 1.08, the minutes from the organizational meeting from January 7th. And lastly, 1.09, the minutes from the committee meeting held January 7th. Do I have a motion to approve 1.05 through 1.09?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. All right, with that approved, we can move on to item two. This is our presentation section, so 2.01, and I will turn it over to our superintendent, Mrs. Ronan.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted everyone to know that January is school board recognition month, so we want to show our appreciation to our great school board members. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mrs. Chesson to pass out the certificate from the Ohio School Boards Association and just a little token now as I read the proclamation of appreciation. You know, school board members exemplify local citizens' control and decision-making in education. They are volunteers. They volunteer hundreds of hours and an immeasurable amount of energy to ensure that our schools are providing the best education possible. And too often, we neglect to recognize the dedication and hard work that these men and women who represent us. So the staff and students of our district are asking all local citizens to take a moment to say thank you for caring about all the children's education here in Norwood. So we salute our public servants here in Norwood, whose dedication and civic responsibility make local control of public education in our community possible. We applaud them for their vision and voice to help shape a better tomorrow. So let's give a round of applause to our board of educators. And yes, you may open your gift. And we're so happy here tonight that we have an audience who can give them a round of applause before we move on to our rising stars.
I love the swapping.
Cross body.
Ooh. It's just a little token for all the volunteer hours you put in, so thank you very much.
We'll take this to all the sports things. Field trips. That's awesome. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Continuing on, item 2.02, this is our rising star presentation, so I will turn it over to Mrs. Chesson and Mrs. Havlin.
Thank you, Madam President. When I call your names, students, please come forward to receive your certificate and also stay up here so we can recognize you and say some nice things about you. Our first rising star comes from Sharpsburg Elementary, Haven Collins. Haven's is a first grader who's eager to learn. Go right over there, Haven. She comes to school ready to be her best self. She is a PACS leader and she is in our calm and peaceful learning environment. She is a sweet soul and shows empathy towards others. She encourages others to work hard. Haven's favorite animal is a giraffe. She is a spirited gymnast and she loves to have fun with peers and adults at recess. She performs well in all subjects and can be found teaching those in need. We think Haven is amazing because she gives her utmost effort to grow and she cares deeply about everyone. Congratulations, Haven. You can sit right up there. Okay. Norwood View Elementary School Rising Star, Mary Moore. I don't think Mary's here, but we're still going to read about her. We are thrilled to announce that Mary Moore has been selected as the Rising Star Student of the Month. Mary has been a part of the Norwood View Elementary family since kindergarten. As a first grader, she has shown remarkable progress as a strong reader and writer. Mary demonstrates a commendable work ethic in class, always striving for excellence. She arrives prepared, actively participates in discussions, and maintains focus and attentiveness at all times. Her strong desire to succeed is evident, as she is willing to put in the extra effort needed to achieve her goals. Mary's kindness and respect extend to her teachers, classmates, and all staff members at Norwood View. She is truly a friend to everyone, making her a joy to have in a classroom. We are immensely proud to recognize Mary as our rising star. We have no doubt that she will continue to shine brightly in all the years ahead. Keep up the great work, Mary, and Norwood View loves you. Williams Avenue Elementary Rising Star, Sampson Taggy. Sampson is an outgoing, caring, and thoughtful kindergartner. Sampson comes to school every day on time, prepared, and motivated to do his best and try his hardest. He is an exceptional student who takes pride in his work. Sampson is equipped with a positive infectious attitude. He participates frequently by sharing ideas, asking questions, and contributing opinions to discussions. He thinks of his peers' needs and feelings at all times. Sampson's excitement for learning is contagious. He models what it means to be and look like a PACS leader. We are so proud of you, Sampson. The Norwood Montessori School Rising Star is Auden Kinsley. Auden is a shining example of a PACS leader at the Norwood Montessori School, exemplifying our three school rules: taking care of ourselves, other living things, and the environment. Auden started this school year not very excited about math, but she worked hard, asked questions, and now loves math and looks forward to learning new math concepts. Her classmates often look to her for a helping hand, as she's always supportive and kind and an excellent teacher. Because of her dependability, Auden is often caught upon to help out with special tasks. Auden also keeps her teachers and classmates smiling with her wonderful sense of humor and creative way of thinking. Congratulations, Auden. You are truly a role model and a rising star. Norwood Middle School Rising Star, Madden Goodman. Seventh grader Madden makes it his personal goal to demonstrate school pride. Madden, you can go over there. Thank you. He treats everyone around him with respect and kindness. As an exceptional honor student, he is a leader and a role model. He consistently exhibits high academic achievement levels and earns high grades. Madden participates regularly in class discussions with interest. His energy is uplifting, and this makes him such a joy to have in class. Along with his academic efforts, Madden is a tremendous drive to be the best he can. Madden is an exceptional honor student, but don't be fooled by his kind demeanor. He is a fierce competitor who excels on the wrestling mat. The same drive and energy seen in the classroom make him an impressive wrestler who demonstrates true sportsmanship. He has emerged as the wrestling team leader and role model who inspires others. Madden always has a grateful and positive attitude. This humble athlete has a promising future on the mat. Norwood Middle School expects great things from Madden in the future. People like him make Norwood Middle School a Hall of Fame school and Norwood City School District great. Norwood High School Rising Star, Reed Heberling. Reed is not just a rising star, he's a true rock star. He embodies everything we could hope for in a student and has an incredibly bright future ahead of him. He is taking two AP courses in the advanced math track and Spanish III. In short, he has an incredibly rigorous academic schedule, and he excels in all of his coursework. When it comes to extracurriculars, you can find Reed leading the sophomore class as the class president. You could also find him in the pool swimming the butterfly or the 500 free. And if he's not in either of those, go look for him on the marching band field or onstage with his trumpet in hand. It's going to be a lot of fun watching Reed continue to excel at Norwood High School over the next two and a half years. We are proud to have him walk our hallways every day. District Athletic Rising Star, Ada Stutzman. Ada is a star that continues to rise. She is a multi-sport student athlete who's been a welcoming presence to each team she is on. In the fall, she played varsity tennis, and in the winter, she's a member of the varsity swim team. On December 19th, she broke a school record in the 200-meter individual medley with a time of 2 minutes, 46.38 seconds. She was a nominee for the Cincinnati Enquirer Small School Swimmer of the Week for the week of January 6th. Keep rising, Ada. This is only the beginning. You are a star in the making. District Creative Arts Rising Star, Ewan Vincent. Norwood Middle School is proud to announce Ewan as the rising artist for the month of January. Ewan is an eighth grade art student with a passion for the arts. It has been delightful to watch Ewan this year put on his own spin on his art projects. Ewan has a love for anime art, but was versatile and able to adapt his talents to handle anything. Ewan showed a real interest and drive with all of his work. It wasn't uncommon for him to take work home and return with it completed just to be able to work on more drawings in class. We look forward to seeing where Ewan's artistic talents lead him in the future. District Staff Rising Star, Kim Everhart. Sharpsburg is so proud to honor Ms. Kim Everhart as our rising star. Affectionately known as Ms. Kim to both students and staff, she plays a vital role in the Sharpsburg team. As a health aide, Ms. Kim stands out for her unmatched dedication. Her compassion and kindness are infectious, and she is reliable, trustworthy, and meticulous in her work each day. Sharpsburg would not be the same without your presence. Congratulations, Ms. Kim. We cherish you and we want you to know you belong at Sharpsburg. At this time, Rising Stars, the board members would like to come around and congratulate all of you, and then we're going to get a nice group picture, so just stay where you
I'm going to organize you a little bit. Girls, could you step down carefully? And then could that, or a rising star switch over a little bit? And then board members, keep moving. Yes, just a little bit. And then board members, if you can go to the other side. Shift down just a smidge more. Big smiles. I'm going to take a couple more and then... Do you have them, Kelly?
Now I need all you guys out there.
At this time, congratulations, Rising Stars. We're going to have you and all of your very important people that you brought this evening to follow Ms. Cornelius out to the lobby to get some nice pictures of the group. Thank you all for being here tonight.
That's right. She's ready for the limelight. Do you know her?
No. She just said she wanted to see Madden. But she helped me, so I said, will you help me? So she got to help me. And I said, come on. She didn't want to go back.
Item three, this is personnel superintendent recommendations. So at this time, I will turn it over to Superintendent Ronan.
Thank you, Madam President. 3.01, employment. Item number one, we want to welcome Chris as a student assistant aide. Item number two is just a correction to the December 19th agenda on a date, an effective date. Number three is a change in status for our avenues for success. It's a person just changing from site staff to site coordinator. And number four, I'm happy to announce these are the pupil activity contracts. We are hiring for spring sports already, because yes, spring will eventually come. So, so thank you. This concludes my report for section three. I will continue with section four after the vote.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve 3.01?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. All right, Mrs. Ronan, you can continue on with item four, personnel board recommendations.
Thank you. Item number 4.01 is a resolution to renew our treasurer Julie Camp House's contract.
Do I have a motion to approve 4.01?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for being so great, Julie.
Thank you for having me.
All right, Mrs. Camp House?
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. All right, item five on the agenda, this is the education committee report, so at this time, I will turn it over to Mrs. Rarica.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay. I don't know why my computer isn't showing it to me, but I remember from earlier looking at the agenda, also I could look at on this paper, that we have two field trips for the high school, one going to Great Oaks and one going to the Art Academy and Art Museum. I move to approve these field trips.
I will second.
Any discussion? All right, Mrs. Camp House?
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. All right, moving right along, item six, this is the policy committee report, and at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a few policies that we're going to have the second reading for, starting with EBBA, first aid. It's been updated to address new requirements to provide an AED in each building. JHG, reporting child abuse and mandatory training. Updated to reflect inclusion of AED training and service training requirements of RC 3319.073B. JK, employment of students. Add new legal reference RC 3345.205. IKF, graduation requirements. Updated to reflect new permissions allowing students to fulfill one-half unit of financial literacy by completing AP microeconomics or AP macroeconomics. And IGD, co-curricular and extracurricular activities. And IGDJ, interscholastic athletics. Have been updated to reflect new provision authorizing district superintendent or chief administrative officer of a school to permit a home-educated student, a student enrolled in a non-public community STEM or STEAM school, or a student enrolled in a different district to participate in interscholastic athletics. JECBC, admission of students from non-chartered or home education has also been updated to reflect new provision authorizing district superintendent or chief administrative officer of a school to permit a home-educated student, a student enrolled in a non- in a non-public community STEM or STEAM school, or a student enrolled in a different district to participate in interscholastic athletics. IGAE, Health Education. This has been updated to reflect change in terminology of health topics and adding requirements for instruction topics in certain grades and allowing for opt-in for certain health-related programming. IGAH/IGAI, Family Life Education/Sex Education. Has been updated to reflect a change in terminology. And ECA, Building and Ground Security, has been updating Building and Ground Security. I would like to make a motion that we approve the second reading and adopt these policies.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
How appropriate the interscholastic athletics one, because we have our Rising Star athletic is one of those kids.
All right.
Yeah. And she plays on the tennis team, too.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes. All right, item seven, this is Building and Grounds Committee. We do not have any requests, so we can move on to item eight, which is our Finance Committee Report. And at this time, I will turn it over to Treasurer, Mrs. Camp House.
Thank you, Madam President. Only a few things on the agenda. 8.01, the Monthly Financials, the CFO Report. And Change Order Listings are attached for your approval. 8.02, Appropriation Resolution, which is our current budget for the year. And 8.03, a Business Associate Agreement, which is an agreement on HIPAA and FERPA privacy rules with Talbert House. Last week, we did have a line item that I had to remove for a bid to start the Williams Beautification Project. Unfortunately, that had to be pushed back. That'll be on the February agenda, and we don't anticipate any delay in the project from that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Camp House. Do I have a motion to approve 8.01 through 8.03?
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes. Moving along, item nine, this is the Hearing of the Public, and we do not have anybody here that wishes to speak. So we can continue on to item 10, which is the Report Section. 10.01 is the Board Announcements. So at this time, I will open it up to the Board if anybody has anything they would like to share.
I do. I just want to recognize the pain and loss in the community this weekend, or today, that our school community needs to really keep an eye out for the needs of our Montessori family. I think, Alice, you have information on how to support the family that maybe we can share on the school's page, potentially?
I saw it on Facebook today, yeah.
I think it might be a good idea for the school to make sure that we make a post as well, so that our school community can help support that family.
Anything else? All right. 10.02, this is the Superintendent Report, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Ronan.
Thank you, Madam President. I just hit a few items. I wanted to remind everyone that this Monday is Martin Luther King Junior Day, and we will have no school on Monday. And then I also wanted to make people aware of in February, the Parent Teacher Conference Nights, and also some of the dates for our open enrollment policy that are coming up soon. I'll just leave those up there to make sure everyone has them. So that concludes my announcements.
Okay. 10.03, this is the Great Oaks Report, so I will turn it over to Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Madam President. For the Great Oaks Report, we pretty much just got our assignments for the upcoming year. I'll be moving over to the Education and Curriculum Committee instead of the Buildings and Grounds where I was serving for the past two years. I've had this role before, so that'll be a lot of fun to go back to. They have also, they gave me the honor award for completing my second term as the representative for the Oaks Board. We also got to do a tour of the expanded facility at the Oaks for our nursing program, our fire service and EMT training program, and our physical education technicians program. So we got to see all of the new spaces. They're getting finalized over Christmas break, and the last, I guess checklist items should be finished by the end of the month for those programs to open for both our high school and adult ed students. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ballard. 10.04, this is the Norwood Community Television Board, which, that's my report. And I heard from Tyler, and he wants us to know that the club hasn't met since before Christmas because of snow days and the holiday break and the Monday off days. So nothing new to report, but they are keeping busy with the winter sports. So I'm sure we will hear more once the club is back up and running. All right, 10.05, this is the OSBA Legislative Liaison, and I will turn this back over to Ms. Ballard.
Thank you again, Madam President. Outgoing State Rep Sarah Carruthers from Summit County and lobbyist Lori Kirchner are Governor Mike DeWine's newest appointees for the State Board of Education, in addition to Gloria Rogers as well. The governor has also reappointed Amy Fugit, a former teacher, was recently appointed to a vacancy there. DeWine's appointments are bringing the Board of Education turnover to nine of 19 seats. All six of the seats for the November ballot will see new membership because of a combination of term limits and incumbents deciding not to seek reelection. So it will be a brand-new state board coming up. Let's see here. The Senate Committee unanimously confirmed all of the changes to Senate Bill 208, which is the confirmation for school districts to accept children of military families through open enrollment. And that's something that he mentioned in policy that has been completely agreed upon at the Senate, or at the State House level. They also passed House Bill 8 and House Bill 206 as well. 206, I don't think I've spoken much on, that is the one for changes, the superintendent has the right to change, excuse me, has the right to utilize new expulsion options when students pose imminent and severe endangerment to others. Initially, it was not more than 180 days. So a student that is expelled under this provision could be required to undergo additional mental health assessments through licensed professionals. And the superintendent has the ability to set out criteria for that student to return to school. If determined that the student hasn't met that criteria, expulsion can extend in 90-day increments as needed to serve that student during whatever services might be provided. This bill is currently waiting the signature of the governor. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ballard. 10.06, this is Avenues for Success, so I will turn it over to Mrs. Rarica.
Thank you, Madam President. Avenues is continuing their family learning series, and they have a program Delicious on a Dime was scheduled last week, but it'll be rescheduled for another date, and that sounds like it should be really interesting. And they are also partnering with Baby Bear, our local charity organization that helps parents with children five and under with all kinds of things that they might need, connections to services, and diapers, and clothes, and books. And so the partnership will entail that each child will be getting the book Good Night Moon, sponsored by Shepherd Chemical, and Avenues will be helping out with that. So I think that's really special. That's all I have for Avenues for Success.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Rarica. Item 11 on the agenda, this is Future Meetings. So our committee meeting is scheduled on February 4th at the Board of Education Office on Williams. And our regular board meeting will be February 13th here in the high school mini auditorium. Do I have a motion to approve the future meetings?
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes. Item 12, this is Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I thought we were going to have a heat pump update?
Oh!
We do have Mr. Peter here if you need to ask any questions.
I think folks just want to know what that timeline looks like, what plannings are, if the classrooms stay in the 50s. Are we consolidating classrooms? Are we talking closures? Are we looking at?
Yes, we have consolidated classrooms. We can't give you a timeline. I know Mr. Peter has told us he is in contact with all the distributors of the parts. It's really three heat pumps of the 13. So the building certainly has heat. One class might have heat, the other doesn't, so we're certainly giving teachers the option of relocation. And we really don't have that many classes in the 50s. But I mean, they are in the 60s, and that can be chilly if you're, you know, 65 or 66 degrees. But I know that Mr. Peter has turned up the heat, but then, of course, that will cause the classroom next door to be too warm. But we are moving teachers, so no one is uncomfortable. We should be fine tomorrow. The temperature's supposed to be 40, but I do anticipate possibly next Tuesday, when the weather gets cold again. Quite honestly, the heat pumps really just don't keep up with the frigid temperature. And you know what they do is they, plus, we're supposed to bring in outside air. So how they work is they suck in air, and if the air's 8 degrees outside, and you're bringing air in, and then you have to have the heat pump raise the temperature to 68 degrees. They do struggle when they're single digits. And that is what we have. You know, there was a day when we had boilers in schools, and everything was toasty warm. But when you put in air conditioning in a building, the boilers go away, and you've got heat pumps. So yes, I mean, we have classrooms in the 60s because it is a struggle to heat the entire building at this moment in time. But I don't know if you wanted to add anything else?
We were able to crank up the rooftop units to bring in outside air warmth more than we usually do. So by lunchtime, late afternoon, this afternoon, we found that most rooms were in the upper 60s.
Which building? Because I've heard multiple buildings were being affected in this way.
That's with the middle school.
Okay.
At Brook Williams Elementary, we do have a compressor that went down. I did find out today, though, that the service company believes they can get one here hopefully next week.
Okay.
But that, too, we are able to adjust the air, the outside air. We are able to heat that a little bit warmer to, and essentially, Williams only affects one classroom. But we are able to bump up the air feed there to make it in the 60s again.
And that classroom's moving to the library next week anyway.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand how it works, because my house is doing the same thing. It's dropping in temperature, my heat pump's not working properly. I think the biggest concern that folks are having is that we just put in these units not too long ago, and they're not working. And other districts manage to not have failures in their units. So I want to know, is this something that's with the unit we purchased? Is this a warranty issue that caused the failure? Or is this just, we got lucky and got a bad heat pump?
They are covered, the parts that we have are trying to get in place are covered under warranty.
Okay.
But when they told me that they are having trouble getting them from the supply warehouse, they said a lot of other places are needing these parts as well. So I don't think we're the only ones with this issue.
Okay.
I keep my house in the low 60s anyways.
Oh, wow.
I don't have a middle schooler right now, but they would be prepared and dressing in layers. But I saw a lot of kids who had some really nice layers and like brought blankets, and I was like, oh, good for you. Be cozy at school.
We appreciate your efforts, Mr. Peter, on trying to get this situated. We know this isn't fun for anybody.
No.
So I appreciate all of our administration that's jumped in and helped in moving classrooms around, and thank you for your efforts. And I know that we're doing the best we can, so I...
And there was space heaters brought over to the middle school, right? Correct?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Peter really has done a wonderful job, so thank you, John.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
The time is 6:38, and we are adjourned. Thank you.